It's close to five o'clock. At this time, I will call the work session for Perry City Council Monday on May 1, 2017. Order please. We have a floor. Item three, arrivals for review and discussion. Item three A, appearances. Three A one is Ms. Gloria Ross from the Homeland Association of the Heathers and Mr. Richard Mars. The Homeland Association of Moss Oaks relative to grass cutting on sand of the road is either Ms. Ross or Mr. Mars president. Thank you. Item three B is the fiscal year 2017 operating budget. Item three B one is the Department of Community Development. Mr. Wood.
Well, we'll speak from over here today. Thank you all for the opportunity to present our budget for the fiscal year 2018. In terms of community development, I believe the budget was in line with the goals and strategies of the strategic plan. So, the, so far this year, in this fiscal year, some of the accomplishments of the department include collecting nearly $770,000 in fees and permit fees on construction value estimated about $51 million. 490 residential permits issued, 106 non-residential permits issued, over 2,500 building inspections, 398 code enforcement cases addressed, 84 engineering projects with 717 total inspections. We've adopted the Courtney-Hodges Form-Based Code, hired a new code enforcement specialist, and of course, you brought me on to work. So, looking at the numbers, there's a fairly significant increase in the total department budget this year. Looking at the first three call centers, administration, engineering, and building inspections, those numbers are all related to salary or benefits adjustments. Code enforcement is the largest increase this year, and that was in due, part in due to the new position that we hired based on your approval mid-year. That also includes about $17,000 of funds for demolition of dilapidated storage. Regional planning stays about the same. Those are the fees that we provide to the regional commission and to RACs. And GIS increased some based on additional user licenses that we're, that we needed. The comprehensive plan has been completed, so that's not funded, and form-based zoning is not funded. That will be included in the land development ordinance update that we are currently working One major proposal this year is about $70,000 for, excuse me.
Will you back up?
Yes, sir.
The last thing you talked about was the comprehensive plan update and the form-based zoning.
Yes, sir.
Do you anticipate the deal to do update to be done sometime in the next fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
Do you anticipate there being an impact of the FY '18 budget or calls up?
No, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, a major proposal this year is, as I mentioned, about $70,000 that we are proposing to upgrade our permitting software. This is a program that I believe is going to be of benefit to the city and to our customers, and I see this as a long-term investment as opposed to just adding money to the budget. We would be looking at purchasing the permitting and land management module for this program called EnterGov. It is a Tyler Technologies software package and is compatible with our current InCode package, which is primarily a financial package. The benefits that we would see with this program is that it's GIS-based, so everything related to development will be tied to the particular parcels. It will give us an opportunity to begin tracking projects the minute they come in the door. Our current software allows us to track from the time we issue a building permit. So, all of the time that is spent reviewing a project, getting it ready to permit it is currently not being tracked efficiently. We're doing it by hand. So, this program will give us, give us that opportunity. We'll also be reviewing plans digitally, so the applicant will be able to submit them online. We will review them online, provide comments back online, issue the permit online, and then they can apply for, request their inspections online, get the results of the inspections online. So, that's going to cut down a lot of paper that they currently submit to us. An average subdivision plan, and we believe this is typical of most other development applications, the cost of printing seven copies of, or seven sets of plans is about $450. If they have to make a revision, that's another $450, and we're estimating that it's an average of $900 that they would be able to save in printing costs by going to this. Additionally, there's going to be time, a reduction in time and review process, which will benefit them as well, since time is money in the construction industry. The, as I mentioned, it's GIS-based. It's also cloud storage-based, so there's no additional server capacity that we need, and we believe that this will be, this is the future of development processing and will take care of us for the long term. Mr. Wood? Yes, sir.
Couple of questions. One, do we retain ownership of the data that was generated or submitted?
I think we would, that's a good question, and I'm not sure.
Okay. Second question.
I think those plans, typically plans that are submitted by an engineering company, for example, they retain copyright ownership to those, but once they submit them to us, to public records, so I'm not sure exactly how that's.
And as long as we have access to that data, even if we decide to go with a different vendor, then that's the point I was getting to. The second part of that is, I know that you were in the process of looking at or having bid out of various vendors for engineering specs and all of that. Can I, is it safe to assume, and I know what happens when you assume, that these vendors would also have the capability of making reviews of plans electronically? Is that going to be a requirement?
Yes, sir. That was one of the requirements in our RFP.
Okay.
That we would, we would have this, or we anticipate having this, and we would provide the license, the license fee to cover that to be able to do it.
Okay. Thank you. That's good.
Where is that captured in your budget?
It is, actually, I believe Mr. Gilmore is under a reserve fund is where Mr. Gilmore proposed paying for it.
It's not allowed in your budget.
No, we're not recommending that this be from the FY 2018. What we are recommending is that it be taken from the fund balance, or fund reserves in the general fund.
This is coming out of fund balances of FY '17, but you know, paperwork will come down in FY.
If you agree with that, or if you, whenever you agree with your scene with it, then we'll start the process. Cost would not be part of the FY '18 budget that you would be adopting.
So, that cost was 70?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And that's a, that's a round number based on some general information that we received. We do recommend.
Can we go back to?
Yes, sir.
What we have here says it's $31,000 is coming in. Where's, is it 70?
Didn't you say 70 a few minutes?
70 is the cost for the actual upgrade. There is a $31,000 annual subscription fee, which will cover the licenses and the upgrades on an annual basis.
So, you've come up with a total of 70 coming out of the.
Or at least the first year, right. If you go back and take a look at capital under the community developments, you'll see that figure in there, which is actually the system.
That's what, that's what I thought. That's where I wanted to get to. It's in your capital budget, which I allocate to the capital budget. It's just a little confusing because it said, yeah, rest of the, yeah, that's what I was saying. That's why I was giving you where they said, yeah, I think it's capital issue.
So, we do recommend approval of the proposed budget. With that, we anticipate in this fiscal year completing the update of the Perry Land Development Ordinance, continuing to provide exceptional customer service, and improve where we can. Anticipating improving on the efficiency of our procedures, resolving ongoing code compliance cases. I know that that's been an issue in the past, and we'll be addressing those as well as looking at ways to improve those provision processes as well, and continue processing near record number of permits and inspections. While I'm confident that we can provide the services that our customers expect with the budget proposed for this fiscal year, I do want to point out that in future considerations we need to look at, or be looking at or thinking about, if the current development trends continue within the next couple of budget cycles, we may need to be looking at adding an additional building inspector, at least part-time, if not full-time. The number of inspections that I pointed out earlier, that's averaging about 12 and a half inspections per day. I've been told that 15 is about the max that we can do efficiently without going behind. That depends on the types of inspections. Some take longer to do than others, but we'll certainly keep track of that and make sure that we're not getting overstretched on that, on that position. Secondly, I think we need to be considering a plan of position sometime in the near future to review plans, review applications, and also to include, include some enforcement of the zoning ordinances. And lastly, as part of this, I think the proposed software upgrade is going to provide us with digital data from that point forward, but we currently have three rooms in this building that are nothing but storage of approved plans and a number of filing cabinets for property files. So, at some point, I think we need to look at digitizing those old projects to free up space in the building. And then finally, everyone in the community development office wants to thank you for your continued support, and I'll be glad to answer any questions on that.
Council? Mr. Gilmore?
Oh, then, you're really charming, smiling faces.
That's a good question. Why aren't you in there? Were you taking the picture?
I took the picture. I'm here in person.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item three B two, the Perry Police Department. Chief Lynn?
Sir, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
There's a little trend at the first round of these, everybody saying, we're happy with what Mr. Gilmore recommended. We're not going to deviate from that. We had no major issues with the city manager's recommendations, but I do want to go over a few things. Just a small number of items. First, I want to say, in the police business, we tend to do things in category, or crimes, decisions, calls for service, all those kind of things. Recognize, of course, this is a fiscal year budget, but I do want to say that I'm really proud of our, our officers, our men and women. Last year, we had a really tough time nationwide in the largest law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty, many of them targeted, and it hit home in Middle Georgia. We had six officers killed in the line of duty in Middle Georgia, and every one of those six that got killed, I have somebody or more than one officer that did that personally. And that brings it home in a hurry if you're in our profession, and we have a lot of young officers. They stepped up, and they kept on an even keel. Of course, we worked hard at the command staff level to make that happen as well, but I was really proud because I think we made additional in those in the community, even in spite of that diversity, and they worked really hard. One little factor about that, I'll tell you in just a minute, but I think that was the biggest accomplishment we had last year, was keeping it together, rising to the occasion, continuing to do a really good job and interacting with the community well, and I feel very proud of this about. So, I think it's good to look at our service population. I know, I know y'all know some of these things, but the bottom line is we are busy. The city's growing. I'm not going to go through all of these, but I, I do think it's interesting additions to our population. You know, we already know that all of the negative visitors comes with accidents every year, but our traffic count just down I-75 is like 1.67 million cars a year, and I don't know how many on the southern area at our four exits, but even if it's just 1%, that's quite a hit. But, so needless to say, we only anticipate less visits. Always want to show y'all calls for service, and you're going to say, because we've been riding a trend of increasing calls for service, and you'll look and say, we had a downturn last year. That's not exactly true, and I'll tell you why. And a lot of this is due to the environment we're working in. If you look at that, it's 2,629 calls less than the year before, but we had 3,700 plus less self-initiated calls, where our officers are out there interrupting crime cycles, doing things based on their observation, proactive, if you will. I'm not crazy about that word, but that's what we're describing. So, if you put our normal number of self-initiated calls in there, which attracts real closely about 30% of our call volume, then we've been like 38,000 calls. And the reason that I think the self-initiated calls down is because environmental operating. Every call became a two officer call, sometimes a three officer call to check the perimeter of where the two officers were. I think there was probably some hesitancy to make stops that weren't absolutely necessary in some cases. I've seen that trend turn around as, as we progress, but I do think that that actually gives a little bit of caution, I think, given our normal self-initiated calls, we would have had an increase for another year. And all of our, has been going on, our Part One crimes, which is the, the major felony crimes that get reported to the FBI, a beautiful crime report, and this is something that we do monthly, and it's compiled annually into a report, a nationalized report. We have reduced crime from 655 total in 2012 to 513, or counting the year 2016, and these are counted on the county. So, we've had a fairly steady decrease across the board. Sometimes one crime might be up and another one down. We had our first homicide in 2016, first one in eight years, which fortunately was solved, unfortunately it happened. Part of being busy, of course, is supporting the feel-good events that happen around the city. These are just a few of them that take a lot of our resources to do. I know you're all familiar with them. I just put that up there to kind of point it out at the root. And so, there is something new on board that came out of the governor's office. He's launched a law enforcement reform initiative, and that has brought extra requirements to law enforcement agencies across the state. The immediate one that we're dealing with is some changes in the courses of fire for our farm qualifications, so we're having to retrain people in new ways. There's more emphasis on things like de-escalation techniques, and so we're, we're already responding to that, sending two, two of our trainees to train the class for de-escalation, and they'll come back and deliver that to the whole department, which is one model that we've been trying to get to, save the city money and also be more efficient in training because you can only send so many people at one time to the price of the cost. The seating is limited. We can't spare to, you know, send 10, 10 people in one week, even if we had available slots. So, we can come back and do it in-house, and we're trying to do that as much as we can to deliver essential training. De-escalation training is one of the things that's high on the list. There is one thing that we requested in the budget that wasn't recommended. I do want to put it out in front of you for future consideration, and that's, Chief.
Before you go there, can you back up a minute?
Sure.
Since I've got a personal.
Yes.
The mandated specific courses of fire for weapons carried, is that significantly different than what opposed requires now, or is just some additional training on the existing weapons? That's a little confusing.
Okay. They have changed the courses of fire.
Okay.
So, we're using the same weapons. There's just different, we haven't actually done it yet, but we're doing it in like two weeks, but.
Okay.
No, 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 I mean, I've read through them. I'm trying to, they've changed some of the sequences, some of the timing, there's some stuff that you're just doing.
Well, that's a good question, or you can use deadly force and that type of thing.
Deadly force is a classroom thing that goes hand in hand.
Okay.
And they're, they have increased the number of hours that are required for that in this addition as well.
And that's, that's across the board, correct? We're all post-occupied officers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
It is. So.
Before we go further.
Sure.
Can you explain a little bit more about the use of force and de-escalation?
Yes, ma'am. Use of force, when we talk about that for training purposes, we basically need the legal requirements for different levels of force, but then we train to the practical applications, which is what I'm going to talk about in just a second. And de-escalation is the different techniques that you can use to prevent having to use force. Like, there is a class that's been around a long time called verbal judo, which teaches you how to talk to people and use, use hooks instead of triggers, which is really a negotiation technique, but it's the same concept. Use things to draw people in and develop rapport as opposed to saying things that might further aggravate, and just ways to, to de-conflict the situation and try to gain cooperation as opposed to having to use force.
Okay. Does that include the, the new training that I read about off of working with special needs?
It, it does, and we're, we're in the process right now of scheduling some of that training. I don't have that data on the chair, but yes, there's, there's been a whole array of forces that have come out, you know, dealing with ill people, dealing with special needs of other kinds, recognizing medical conditions that may masquerade as something else, as in somebody in a diabetic, you know, a low blood sugar kind of thing. The high blood sugar doesn't cause you that doubt, but the low blood sugar does. You don't know who you are, where you're at, what you're doing, and so there's training about that. There's a whole new genre of training that's come out, a whole lot of different populations that we do. So, the, we've got an old fire simulator, which was good when it was taught. It basically is, is the way they kind of started out, where you're in a situation in which you see play out in full size in front of you on screen, and you've got a weapon that's keyed into the computer, but it's not a real, well, it actually is a real weapon, but it doesn't fire. And then you have to make a judgment based on what appears before you. You know, is it a person with a gun, which you have to react to, or is somebody coming at you with a device, you know, which, of course, you don't want to shoot them. You turn around a corner and there's, you know, a woman with a child. Good training for its time, but they've gone a couple of iterations past that now to incorporate the de-escalation techniques. So, it's fully customizable on the fly by the instructor, that if the officer's given appropriate demands, if they're trying a technique, then that technique can work and the person can stand that. So, it's much more realistic training, and it's high on this initiative, and there is a copy of a bullet point thing of initiatives that's on board back for y'all. So, we estimate in today's dollars, it's going to be about $30,000. To view the output, of course, we can find a place to set it up. It can be used all the time, and because there's stuff, some stuff you can do without instructor, precisely, if you want to do the full de-escalation part, you have to have a trained instructor. I want to put that for future consideration. And the only other thing that I, I want to ask for future consideration, and it actually is an recommendation from the city manager, to consider additional personnel mid, at that point, after looking at the revenue. You know, we've been working toward that eight additional. We made great progress. We appreciate that. We're, you know, we're two officers, but, and still think the numbers hold true of the study we did four years ago. I plan on updating that this year, but that's it from me. You have any questions?
Chief, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You said this simulator that's $30,000.
Yes, sir. I mean, you can spend over 100 if you want to, but we think we can get one that meets our needs for $30,000.
Would it be possible to share this and say some of it, who probably could not afford it? I'm not saying the king, but I'm just saying, or Warren Robbins, or Houston County, or Fort Valley, is there any way to, don't they use our fire range at times?
They do. Warren Robbins does, because they've got their own, but.
Someone else I mentioned.
It's, it's a possibility, one I haven't looked into. I mean, obviously, you know, if we're going to bite out of our budget, I was looking to have it in our facility where our officers can have access to it all the time.
You only, they have to go through it how many times a year?
Well, required, required, required twice a year.
Twice?
For the, for the other training, the simulator is being put in as a recommended option to reinforce all the techniques, not only the use of force, the weapon skills, but the de-escalation skills as well. But we, we take the approach that if they can do it more often, that's the, it makes for a better, well-rounded, better-trained officer.
I understand that, but what my question to you then directly would be, could we jointly own this with, say, some of it, or Houston County Sheriff's Department and have it at our fire range, and they come out there and use it?
That's certainly a possibility, but like I said, we want to have it explored, and, you know, we could certainly do that if that's the direction council wishes us to go in, sort of explore those possibilities.
Thank you. You have a question, Council?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item three B two, the Perry Fire Department Services. Chief Parker?
My turn. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to chat before you tonight. Just wanted to present a few things. Want to say again, let's see, the next slide. Thank you to the city manager.
Something new on board that came out of the governor's office. He's launched a law enforcement reform initiative. And that has brought extra requirements to law enforcement agencies across the state. The immediate one that we're dealing with is some changes in the courses of fire for our firearms qualifications. So we're having to retrain people in new ways. There's more emphasis on things like de-escalation techniques. And so we're already responding to that, sending two of our trainers to train the class for the escalation, they'll come back and deliver that to the whole department. Which is one model that we've been trying to get through to save the city money and also be more efficient in training because you can only send so many people at one time to the base of the facility. The seating is limited. We can't spare to, you know, send ten people in one week even if we had available slots. So we can come back and do it in-house and we're trying to do that as much as we can to deliver essential training. The escalation training was one of the things that's high on the list. There is one thing that we requested in the budget that wasn't recommended. I do want to put it out in front of you for future consideration. And that's, Chief.
Before you go there, can you back up a minute?
Sure. Since I've got a personal problem. Yes.
The mandated specific courses of fire for weapons carried, is that significantly different than what our post requires now? Or is this just some additional training on the existing weapons? That's a little confusing.
Okay. They have changed the courses of fire. So we're using the same weapons. There's just different, we haven't actually done it, so we're doing it like two weeks, but.
Okay.
No, 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 I mean, I've read through them. I'm trying to, they've changed some of the sequences, some of the timing, there's some stuff that you have to do.
Well, that's a good question, or you can use deadly force and that type of thing.
Deadly force is a classroom thing that goes hand in hand. And they have increased the number of hours that are required for that in this initiative as well.
And that's across the board, correct? Where all post certified officers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
It is. So.
Before we go further.
Sure.
Can you explain a little bit more about the use of force and de-escalation?
Yes, ma'am. Use of force, when we talk about that for training purposes, we basically need the legal requirements for different levels of force. Then we change to the practical applications, which is what I'm going to talk about in just a second. And de-escalation is the different techniques that you can use to prevent having to use force. Like, there is a class that's been around a long time called verbal judo, which teaches you how to talk to people and use hooks instead of triggers. Which is really a negotiation technique, it's the same concept. Use things to draw people in and develop a rapport as opposed to saying things that might further aggravate. And just ways to de-conflict the situation and try to gain cooperation as opposed to having to use force.
Okay, does that include the new training that I read about off of working with special needs?
It does, and we're in the process right now of scheduling some of that training. I don't have a data on it yet. But yes, there's been a whole array of forces that have come out. You know, dealing with ill people, dealing with special needs of other kinds, recognizing medical conditions that may masquerade as something else, as in somebody in a diabetic, you know, a low blood sugar kind of thing. The high blood sugar doesn't cause you that doubt, but the low blood sugar does. You don't know who you are, where you're at, what you're doing. And so there's training about that. There's a whole new genre of training that's come out, a lot of different populations that we do.
Thank you.
So the, we've got an old fire simulator, which was good when it was taught. It basically is the way they kind of started out, where you're in a situation, which you see play out in full size in front of you on screen. And you've got a weapon that's keyed into the computer, but it's not a real, well, it actually is a real weapon, but it doesn't fire. And then you have to make a judgment based on what appears before you. You know, is it a person with a gun, which you have to react to, or is somebody coming at you with a vise? You know, which of course you don't want to shoot with. You turn around a corner and there's, you know, a woman with a child. Good training for its time, but they've gone a couple of iterations past that now to incorporate the de-escalation techniques. So it's fully customizable on the fly by the instructor. Then if the officer's given appropriate demands, if they're trying a technique, then that technique can work and the person can stand that. So it's much more realistic training, and it's high on this initiative. There is a copy of a bullet point thing of initiatives that's on board back for y'all. So we estimate in today's dollars, it's going to be about thirty thousand dollars. To view the output of course, we can find a place to set it up. It can be used all the time. And, because there's some stuff you can do without instructor, precisely if you want to do the full de-escalation part, you have to have a trained instructor. We want to put that for future consideration. And the only other thing that I want to ask for future consideration, and it actually is an recommendation from the city manager, to consider additional personnel mid-point after looking at the revenue. You know, we've been working toward that eight additional, we made great progress, we appreciate that. We're, you know, we're two officers, but, and still think the numbers hold true of the study we did four years ago. I plan on updating that this year. But, that's it from me, if you have any questions.
Chief, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You said this simulator that's thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, I mean, you can spend over a hundred if you want to, but we think we can get one that meets our needs for thirty thousand.
Would it be possible to share this with say, some of it, who probably could not afford it? I'm not saying the king, I'm just saying, or Warren Robbins, or Houston County, or Fort Valley, is there any way to, don't they use our firing range at times?
They do. Warren Robbins does, I guess they've got their own, but those everybody else.
Someone else I mentioned.
It's a possibility, one I haven't looked into. I mean, obviously, you know, if we were to bite out of our budget, I was looking to have it in our facility where our officers can have access to it all the time.
You only, they have to go through it how many times a year?
Well, required, required twice a year. For the other training, the simulator is being put in as a recommended option to reinforce all the techniques. Not only the use of force, the weapon skills, but the de-escalation skills as well. But we take the approach that if they can do it more often, that's what makes for a better, well-rounded, better trained officer.
I understand that. But my question to you then directly would be, could we jointly own this with say, some of it, or Houston County Sheriff's Department, and have it at our firing range, will they come out there and use it?
That's certainly a possibility, but like I said, one I haven't explored, and, you know, we could certainly do that if that's the direction council wishes us to go, sort of explore those possibilities.
Thank you. You have a question, counsel?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item three B three is the Superior Fire Services Services. Chief Parker.
My turn. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, for the opportunity to chat before you tonight. Just wanted to present a few things. Want to say again, let's see, the next slide. Thank you to the city manager for his, looking over what we did submit and giving his recommendations. We're very satisfied with the overall budget, but there are a few things that I want to make you aware of tonight. Next slide. Okay, one of the things we're doing as far as the part-time staffing is trying to work through some issues to limit or minimize the amount of overtime that we're using in the fire department. And one of those things that we did was we implemented a strategy to reduce that by what we call a write-up program. We've implemented the write-up program, whereas when a person is off, such as a battalion chief, formerly had to take place, they were using another battalion chief to come in and fill in his position, which was causing some overtime for that battalion chief. What we're doing now is implementing a program, whereas a captain now rides up for the battalion chief. When the captain moves up, the lieutenant moves up to fill in the captain's role. And one of the things that's done for us is provide more experience for those younger or less experienced individuals in the lower ranks, and it helps us prepare for our future. So in doing so, we've reduced the amount of overtime that we're spending. And what that helps us to do then is we're using part timers to fill the vacancies at the bottom. Whereas the captain and the lieutenant move up, that leaves the vacancy at the firefighter position. So we're hiring a part-time position first to fill that role. If the part timers don't pick it up, then we use a full-time firefighter to fill that role. So one of the things we're looking at here is trying to keep as many part timers on our role as we can. Obviously, because of their work schedule, they're not always available when we need them. So the more part-time people we can have, when we do call, they're apt to fill that position for us when we need it. So that's kind of what we're doing. Obviously, for emergency situations, major fires, storms, things like that, we've got to rely on our full-time personnel that are off duty to come in to help us out for those kind of things. And then like we say here, the battalion chiefs are using their best judgment to make sure that we're doing this and eliminating as many overtime costs as we can.
Chief, how's that working? Have you been in it long enough to know yet?
I don't know that we've been in it long enough to know yet. I think from, my initial thought is, I think over the long haul, it's going to work very good for us. The captains, the lieutenants, they're all very pleased with being able to fill those roles, and it helps the battalion chiefs to be able to take off when they want to, instead of having to worry about that other person filling in. As far as the budget-wise, the money-wise, I don't know that we've looked at it long enough to tell, but I'm confident that this is going to work over the long run for us and eliminate those overtime costs. Well, minimize, not eliminate.
And I don't want to assume anything, so I'm going to ask the question, in those instances when you have write-ups for shifts, who is in charge? Should the right, should a person who is a lieutenant who's writing up to battalion chief, need counsel? Would that come to you or another battalion chief who is off? Or do you have someone available to help them should they need it?
Yes, sir. The way we've kind of looked at that is the off-duty battalion chiefs that are obviously, for the most part, still in town, so to speak, while that other one is off, maybe on vacation, they're always there for counsel should they need it. And on the big calls, they're usually paying attention to the radio and coming in when they need to. But yes, sir, I'm always available for them by phone or radio if they should need me as well, so.
Okay. You've got that covered though?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I didn't want them to feel like they're out there.
Floundering around by themselves, yes, sir, exactly. And that's one of the things too, we try to make sure of, is let them tell us upfront. You know, hey, if you're uncomfortable with this, tell us now and let us know. But what I've seen, when these guys are filling in, they're more than comfortable in that role. And again, that makes me happy that they're prepared for the future should we need to promote or fill more positions.
Yeah, thank you.
How many firefighters are you trying to keep on the list?
Right now, we have seventeen on the list. And what we're trying to do and implement as well, is if we have a part-timer on the list that has not worked for us in six months, then we're wanting to eliminate them and replace them with someone else that will work. Obviously, over time, these guys, they get excited, they want to work when we have positions available, but then due to other part-time work they may have that's more prevalent, or other family needs, they may not be able to work for us in the future. So what we're saying is, if they haven't worked for us in six months, we'd like to eliminate them, but replace them on the list with somebody else. So right now, we're maintaining seventeen part-time firefighters.
You said you might increase that a little bit?
I don't think we'll increase that. That wasn't the recommendation, but we'd like to at least maintain the seventeen that we have.
Okay, in maintaining the seventeen that we have, are those guys available for training when we need, come in for training?
We normally don't utilize them to come in specifically for training them. All the firefighters that we utilize part-time are full-time firefighters somewhere else. So they do get the same type of training at their full-time job that we would require them to get here. Now, if they're on duty with us, they must go and attend the same training that we do. But we don't ask them to come in for any special training separate than what they get at their full-time job.
Okay, and do we know whether those part timers are, up to speed on what they're supposed to get at their job, because race hour job?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, we do. And we can verify that all, most all the time through the Georgia Firefighter Federation Training Council. We can look at their records there as well, knowing that they're getting the same amount of hours or required hours annually that our guys are supposed to get here. Okay, any more questions on that? Next slide. All right, so obviously, one of the, the recommendation from the manager was not to give us several million dollar worth of apparatus, you know, this year. So, and that's definitely understandable. But what I do want to bring to your attention is that our apparatus are aging. And so you can see here, we have ladder two, assigned to the Davis Farm Station, twenty-one year old piece of apparatus built in ninety-six, and it currently has, I think the last check today was about a hundred and eight thousand miles on it. Just to also make you aware, and not up here, but from two thousand and six to twenty sixteen, when we've kind of been keeping the records on this, we've spent a hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and six dollars in maintenance costs for the ladder truck. And two thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine just in FY seventeen. So that's one of the pieces that we definitely recommend replacing in the near future when we can.
And the cost of that would be, what, nine, hundred thousand?
Yes, sir. It could be upwards of that. And obviously, you know, based on what we can afford for our city here, we want to make sure we minimize those costs as much as possible to get the best piece that's most efficient for what we need here in Perry. So we could probably do it for hopefully less than that, maybe seven, seven fifty, somewhere around there, but yes, sir, it's going to be an expensive piece of equipment.
Also, we need to get the one that will meet our needs though. You know, I know, I know you're saying get less, but make sure that whatever you do, it got to meet the need that we have here.
Yes, sir, that is right.
Chief, I know you're tracking this, along with the cost of maintenance for these pieces of apparatus, you are also tracking the downtime along with that. And I would be interested to see a chart along the same timeframe of how, you can fix a part for two thousand dollars, but if the vehicle is down three shifts.
Right.
That's just not acceptable, if that makes any sense.
Yes, sir.
Depending on, and I also know that it depends on what goes wrong at those particular times, but the downtime in comparison to the cost would be just, to me, is just as critical a number in making your decisions such as that, if it may not cost that much to fix it, but if we don't have use of it.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
So when you, as you're tracking this, please make sure you include those numbers.
Okay, yes, sir. I'll make sure we do that.
Thank you.
Also, bring your attention to engine two, which we call the reserve engine. It's assigned out at, well, it's stored there at the Davis Farm Station, built in nineteen ninety-two. It is a twenty-five year old piece of apparatus now, forty-nine thousand miles on that one. It since, from oh six to twenty sixteen, seven thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars in maintenance costs, and about just over twelve hundred just this fiscal year for that engine. And it's currently out of service now, we cannot use it, it needs a new transfer case. So we're looking probably just a little more than three thousand dollars for that cost there, or somewhere around there, between fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars. And we should be able to repair that in-house. We have the personnel that can do those repairs. And then again, bring your attention here to engine one.
Chief, can we go back to two?
Yes, sir.
How much is the price to cost on that machine, piece of equipment?
Well, there's a lot of variation there. I was talking to somebody today, one of our guys, and asking him for a, you know, a ballpark for a low-cost, commercial-type chassis with a pump on it and everything, we need to carry the hose, possibly three, three hundred to three fifty. That's kind of a, probably a low figure. The new bumpers can cost upwards of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well. So somewhere in that range, depending on, again, building it specifically for the needs of Perry and the station that we're likely to assign it to. Anything else on that one? So engine one, looking here, again, assigned to the Hickwood Station right next door, built in two thousand and five, or actually built in oh six. It's about a twenty-two year old apparatus, and again, a hundred and six thousand miles on that one. And for that one, we've had about thirty-nine thousand dollars in maintenance costs over the last ten years, and four thousand in just this fiscal year for that piece of equipment there. So just to make you aware that our apparatus are aging, the NFPA actually recommends apparatus older than twenty-five years old be decommissioned altogether. So our engine two is right there at that age, where the other ones are approaching that. But what we want to get to, what I've talked to the manager about and want to make you aware of, is what we're trying to get to is a recommended replacement schedule. Typically about using a frontline apparatus for about fifteen years, and then letting it go to reserve for five years, which makes it about twenty years old at that point. And then you can always reevaluate if it's still meeting the needs, and then obviously try to replace them every fifteen to twenty years. And you can see the unfortunate thing is that all three of these are over twenty years old now. But that's kind of what we're looking at there for apparatus.
What's your thoughts on engine one?
Well, depending on the need, being a pumper as well, so it'd be just like engine two, somewhere between the three hundred to six fifty, somewhere around there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, then the next slide, please. All right, one of the things that we've been very pleased to have in our budget the last few years is the firefighter physicals. We do have those removed out of the twenty eighteen budget, but we'd like to have you consider allowing us to have those physicals about every two years if we can't do them every year. Of course, as you know, firefighters are much higher than the average to get different forms of cancer than the general population. Some of those would be lung cancer, brain cancer, prostates, and some of those types of cancer. And early detection is the best thing we can do for our folks. The earlier they can find out they have these issues, the better off they'll be, and hopefully getting those types of cancer repaired, fixed, and then coming back on the job when they can there. But, so that's the last thing I have there, is this consideration there for about every two years to have those physicals done. Do want to bring your attention while we're on this item here, is we think that Thursday, the governor is going to sign into law House Bill one forty-six, which most of you may know as what they call the cancer bill. And one of the things that's going to probably affect the city in providing a cancer-type policy for the firefighters, and although they took out the workers' comp part of that, so it's not something you're going to have to pay for a long time, they're looking at a fifty thousand dollar maximum payout if a firefighter gets a major form of cancer. And then there is a income protection where they get, kind of like the workers' comp, sixty percent of their salary for a maximum of thirty-six months, as a benefit on that type of policy that the cities and counties would have to provide for the firefighters. But just to make you aware of that, it's assumed that he's going to sign that into law, I think Thursday, May the fourth, at one of the fire stations up in the northern state. But just to kind of make you aware of that as well.
I had a couple of questions about that. You say that was removed from FY two thousand and eighteen. Was that a recommendation that you were making relative to that?
No, sir.
Had that been in our previous budget?
It was, it was in the previous budget, and to my understanding, previous budgets going back several years, but it was not recommended to go forward by the manager. So what I'm recommending, if we can't do it every year, which it is, there's a cost involved in that, I'd like it to at least be considered every two years.
Is it covered by the medical insurance? Would it not be a physical be covered under normal, any type of medical program that you have?
I don't know the answer to that specifically. I was going to try to look into that on, since I do have the city insurance, to see if that's covered. However, some of the things that they do look at may not be covered in a standard physical that you might go get from your doctor. It does, this one meets the requirements of the National Fire Protection Association, what they recommend you to get.
So is the cost associated with that, what was in your budget? I didn't see that.
It's about six hundred dollars.
A person?
Per person, yes, sir. And that can vary, depending if they get the x-ray, which they don't get the x-rays every year, so it could be just over five hundred or so per person per year.
So you're talking about forty-two people?
Yes, sir. Well, yeah, forty people. So yeah, we're talking about sixteen thousand dollars a year for that.
These are a possibility, if a standard physical is covered under the policy, if you have to do a full physical, or you can just do the additional things.
Sure, yes, sir, that would be a possibility. And like I said, I know, I know currently, all the firefighters that we have don't necessarily participate in the city's insurance, some have it through their spouse or other means, so I'm not sure how that would come into play. But I would think, yes, sir, if the city policy that we have now offers a physical, that may be something that we could look at to make sure the firefighters go get a physical from their own doctor, just ensuring that it kind of meets the same guidelines that the NFPA recommends.
The city health insurance is not a requirement. If I'm not mistaken, I was close to part of a physical anyway, because I get one every year.
Yes.
So it plays part of it, not all of it.
Right.
After you meet your doctor.
All right. Okay, next slide. So with that, I would again, want to say thank you to the manager, thank you to Mayor and Counsel for your support of the fire department over the years, and we're here to serve, and if we can ever help you out, let us know. And if I can ask any other questions, please let me know.
Counsel, if you have anything further? Thank you, Chief. Item three B four is the Department of Public Works, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, I'm going to have to disappoint you immensely, there is no PowerPoint for public works. I just do want to point out, based on the information that we provided to you, you may remember, we talked about some of this stuff before. you may remember we talked about some of this stuff before. For Public Works, we are recommending two full-time positions for litter control and solid waste. I think you'll remember we talked about that. Also, the stormwater functions are all shifting over to Public Works. There was a shift and split between community development and Public Works. That's now going over to Public Works. We are recommend, or I am recommending that vehicle maintenance be shifted over to administration. You may remember we had talked about that before. The reasoning for that is to have better control and accounting for the assets, in other words, the vehicles and where they're assigned. Also, for independent evaluation of equipment, or what's coming in for recommendations to you all, either mid-year or in the budget year. And finally, an independent assessment of possible equipment abuse that you may wind up having, and I want to give you an impression of misuse. We don't have that very often, very, very rare, but I think it's important to have independent, rotated look at that. The Department of Administration has no vehicles. That's why it's considered to be independent. Also recommending that the cemeteries' cost function be shifted over to the Department of Leafer Services. The reason for that is that our cemeteries primarily are moving into a park basis. For example, Evergreen Cemetery, there are no other plots to sell or any of that type of stuff. And the strategic plan calls for our parks and aesthetic values to be in that department. And then finally recommending on shifting interstate lighting back over to the hotel motel tax out of the general fund. For capital items, there are no recommended capital items in general fund for Public Works. There is some in water and sewer and gas. The primary one is in stormwater, where we're recommending to replace the street sweeper. That is an expensive item, which you may have seen in the budget. The estimated cost on that's around $825,000. That will be paid over over time, obviously. We do need to do that for two reasons. The first one before this morning was that that is an intricate part of our stormwater management. It's one of the requirements we have to have for cleaning streets and everything under MS-4. And so, we do need to get that. Also, this morning, we had a gentleman slightly intoxicated who smashed into our street sweeper this morning. We're waiting on the final termination of the damage, but it was substantial both to the vehicle and to our street sweeper.
Is anybody hurt?
No, luckily, as far as I know, no one was hurt. The operator, our operator, did go for a regular process to have an automated assessment relative to his health. I'm not aware of any particular issues. He did talk about some soreness, though we'll have to see. The driver of the vehicle, I don't know, other than I think was transported in an hospital.
He had cuts and bruises and refused treatment. He was treated and reduced. Well, he refused treatment, as seen at the jail, they wouldn't accept him until they got treatment. So, he was hospitalized.
But he wasn't released.
No.
Did you drink enough coffee to fix the street sweeper?
Those are not small machines. So, that being mentioned, because we may need, if you are a general line manager, and I want to emphasize, the city manager had nothing to do with helping that person. Final point, just want to point out relative to fees, that's always a big issue or sometimes an issue when we talk about our enterprise ones. We are recommending a standard type of 2% increase in water and sewer. You may remember we've been doing that for a number of years. We're also recommending a 2% increase in the stormwater utility fee. The gas fund, as far as what they call the city gate, or our portion, is remaining the same. The solid waste fee is remaining the same. However, if you get an additional current, then that cost is being recommended to be reduced slightly based on what we have to pay. Also, we want to remind council members that for the recycling carts, there is no charge for that. So, any customer wants to use it, they get it.
On the, sorry. Cemeteries, are you missing the personnel over there?
Yes.
Do we feel like we have adequate personnel at this point in time to keep them up?
Yes.
The solid waste equipment that we use to gather various items on the streets, is all of that equipment, I'm assuming, in work order? There's no, I didn't see replacing costs for that. I want to mention that those, some of those.
To the best of my knowledge, all our collection equipment.
Definitely five. Probably not to one.
And two fiscal years ago, we got a bunch of. Am I, am I?
Historically, one of the items that continually appears in the request of the back clean mowers, I noticed they were taken out this year. Is there a need considering?
No, because you took care of that this fiscal year. Do you remember? You just recently awarded bids. That took care of that, so that's why they were taken out.
All right, I understand.
Remember, when the department sends this stuff in, it is based on what they feel that they need as of January.
Yeah, I can understand that. I just want to make sure that that seems to reoccur once we get rid of it. It seems to have, hasn't. Have a deal with it right now, then after the July.
That's right. Kind of one of the other things, too, is you may have noticed in the capital for Public Works and General Fund, they're recommending some of the smaller mowers, 16-inch mowers. I'm not recommending anything on that time until we can have a complete assessment. But that's one of the items, again, that's used every single year. And it should be lasting longer than one, two years, two years time. If there is some overwhelming need, we would be back to you for that.
Mr. Gilmore, another periodic that we give requests for more periodic mowing, primarily with light aways. My question to you is, based on the current light away maintenance that we are responsible for today and looking forward, do we have adequate personnel and machinery to handle that at a reasonable rate of code? Now, that's our definition.
That's a very loaded question, Mayor.
I'm looking for a yes, but I haven't heard it yet.
Well, I mean, there are going to be a few changes relative to particularly the maintenance and how it's taken care of for our major streets.
Right.
That go back, and most of that's tied back to the issue about what has to be done for stormwater and all that type of stuff. I think generally, the mowing schedule that the city operates on is satisfactory. Now, that certainly is in the eye of the open. You know, I think, now, we are not in a position, for example, to say that every one of our light aways or whatever that needs to be cut, it is going to be cut every two weeks. I mean, that's not the case, okay? We do spend more time mowing on the main entryways and visual portions that you see coming in the city than we do, for example, on some of the further out, or some of the subdivisions where they have like the vacant lots and that. Some of those locations do wind up getting less than what we would like, but we always go back and respond to demand, you know, that comes in from the citizens.
Sanford Road always seems to be a problem. We get a lot of complaints on that. What's the situation there?
Well, let me back up. I'll be happy to answer that from the manager's perspective, okay? We get a lot of complaints on the course with Sanford Road from persons who feel that there should be a higher level of maintenance. You may remember the two appears, one of them is sick and has requested that we defer this to the next meeting. So, we're going to do that. What our objective is, and what the direction is, is the Public Works, is that we maintain Sanford Road in the same service level that the county maintains. And that's what we are striving for. Now, we do not, we do not pay as much attention, you know, unless there's a citizen complaint on Sanford Road, because there are very limited, maybe none, come to think of it, any city property residents on Sanford Road. That does not mean, and I haven't said, that doesn't mean we ignore it. You may remember, we just paid $133,000 to resurface, you know, that street up there. So, we take care of all the safety issues and all that type of stuff. But wouldn't we see the same level of mowing, for example, that Houston Lake Road would receive, where Perry Park would, then the answer is no. You know, what we do do is we maintain it at the same level that the county maintains. So, there should be relatively no change in service.
Is it not true that part of the problem, slow down, is getting, having to pick up litter before you mow, and putting these two positions in will speed that up sort of?
Yes. You may remember that that was talked about from Mr. Aaron. When he was here, we tried one approach, which could get more people on part-time, I remember that, and that just did not work. And that's why we're back recommending to you to hire the two full-time employees. They will handle other duties other than just, you know, litter cleanup and light away, but that probably their primary.
It's a very difficult balance between perfection and what we can afford to provide. You know, like you say, we maintain a level that the county maintains. And I think we do a very good job on all of our gateways and trying to keep those done. But, yeah, we would like everything to be perfect all the time, but that's quite expensive service to provide.
Yes, that's correct. The other thing, too, is I'll remind council, of course, the general public, is that as part of the strategic plan that you all adopted, every single service has a certain revenue base that pays for it. And so, therefore, if we're going to talk about adding more people to streets, which is in general fund, to do this additional mowing, then that is in direct conflict with additional police officers, because they're both paid for from the property tax, number one. Number two is that you all have determined, and we've been very successful with, I think, about maintaining the military at the same level and not increasing it. And so, therefore, number one, at least in the manager's opinion, it is more important right now for us to staff the police department than it is to mow more frequently. Number two, by and large, at least for my office and everything, there has not been an overwhelming surge of citizens saying, "I want to pay more property tax and have mowing done." It's not to say that you are not approached that. Don't get me wrong on that, okay? But I notice a lot of times there's quite a disjoint between what people would like to have and then what happens when they actually have to pay for it. I think the best example, not necessarily picking on a sore point, but a very good example is the firefight. You know, now people in the city of Perry have a very good idea how much fire protection costs compared to, "It's in my taxes. I pay my taxes, so I should have whatever level I think would be appropriate based on taxes that I pay."
It is where it survives.
Well, I'm going to, but I think as a foreigner, you know, everyone's like, you step back and you go over this type of stuff, you know? Where, I mean, it's the same thing like on fire, okay? Would we like to have brand-new apparatus that we've replaced every 10 years? Sure we would, okay? You won't find, I don't even know where St. John's Creek can do it, but you won't find very many cities that replace their apparatus on that kind of schedule because of how expensive they are. They're necessary, they're needed, but they're very expensive. And so, therefore, you know, as you well know, you have to go through and you have to prioritize, and you have to prioritize, just like a family, based on what your income is that's coming in and what you project your income to be. And we are, from your direction, we are very conservative relative to what we have on our income projections. And that has benefited us very much. You go and take a look at what our fund balances are. You take a look, bring you back to the audit presentation and the compliments that we got from our auditors about how well we have our stuff covered and our cash reserves and all that type of stuff. And that's constantly with you having to go back and make these tough decisions and having that type of balance of what priorities are going to be.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gilmore from council?
Not after that.
Item 3D5, Office of the City Clerk, Ms. Warren.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The FY, FY18, I'm sorry, FY18 operating budget for the city clerk's office first would be the lead city manager. And I do confirm all the recommendations from the city manager. Do you have any questions for me?
Counsel? Thank you very much.
It's smart.
And no slack person. There's a pattern developing. That's okay. Item 3D6, Area Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Clinton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And on behalf of the board and director of the chamber, I want to continue the new trend of the slide presentation. I am certain, as in the past, that we have been providing with our written requests. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about that. Everything is requested to stay at some level of support, with the exception of next year's Dogwood Festival, there is a slight increase. And there is a request to become a supporter of the Place of Southern, if I could continue to expand that. So, I certainly welcome any questions on that. I think I've covered the reasonable request increase in the written documents, but I am here to answer any questions of personal interest.
What that request was?
On the Dogwood Festival, was it?
No, the whole chamber.
The whole chamber, if. It's $28,000, but I wanted to verify.
Operations was $8,000, Dogwood Festival was $3,500. Independent state freedom fireworks was $12,000. Thus, the recommended. Is that close?
You asked for $6,500 and $5,000 for the Place of Southern.
Yeah.
H5.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Clinton, council? Thank you very much. Item 3C is the Public Works Department. 3C1 is the Presentation of the Carl Vincent Institute Management Project. Mr. Hennessy?
Mayor, that needs to be postponed.
Not a problem. Item 3D is Administration. 3D1 is considering authorizing additional city logos on the Armory Tank. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to check to see if there was any interest in the council about adding some additional city logos on the Armory Tank, which we have downtown. Currently, there are two of them, which is fine, but I do notice that when you come into downtown, coming on Washington, you can see the tank, but you can't see any logo on that. That also is the same situation, I believe, when you're coming in on Main Street, to check to see. So, my question to you is, would you like us to explore, not necessarily commit, but explore and get back to you about the cost of having those logos placed on, or not? We just want to leave it at that.
Leave our logos currently on those two tanks as people.
Yes, sir.
And the cost to put two more logos on D-1?
If you decide to go ahead, we'll check and see if I at least can.
Each?
Yes.
So, that's $20,000.
Maybe a little less than that.
I don't think the cost is for that, six, I think, but it is going to cost. So, I think you need it if you're going to have a visibility, but we've checked all the other things, and we got great visibility at the place. It is the place where your brand is seen the most in your downtown area. So, I would like to review this, but it gives us the cost on it, so we can see what. I would like to reiterate, give us the cost on it so we can see what...
I don't mind getting their cost, but I sure don't want to do that. Can't you see the logo walk around the other side of the tank? That's just too much money to spend for a logo which is already on the tank. Even if it's six, I wouldn't vote for it. I like to see you do a certain level of...
Balance, council? I've got one.
Two, four.
One against, you want to say an estimate?
Yeah.
I don't want to say an estimate.
Okay.
I will do it.
Gilmore, we can do an estimate, please. Item 3D2, Consider Bidding for Solid Waste Collection, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. I sent out notice to you all that our solid waste collection franchise agreement expires this coming December. And my question to you is whether you would like to bid for the solid waste collection or to enter into an agreement with advanced disposal to continue on for another franchise period. Normal franchise period that we use is five.
I'd like to see a bid.
I agree. If you bid it, you'll always have the option to go back. You don't have to take the bid that comes in. You always have the option to go back and negotiate. I'd like to see what's available to us.
There might not be anything available?
Just need to make sure to be a tag, really. So we get a good apples-to-apples comparison. I'd like to see a bid, you know, how I feel about it. Yes, sir. Let's see a bid. As would I. Maybe more than two. But at least two. Anything further?
Item 3D3 is Consider Bidding for Cleaning Services, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. I sent you a notice that would like to get authorization from you all. I don't know whether this would be something we do, but I think we can get some better efficiency relative to some of the cleaning services. And you see the three areas that I'm talking about there in the memo. Would like to request that you all okay that we go to bid for that. The reason for that is I think we can get greater efficiency and better performance if we go to bid. But the other thing is, is that it's not one of these services, as far as I can tell, that you can just check with somebody to get an estimate. It's going to be all over the place and you can really never know for sure. So I think it'd be better for us to go to bid. If it doesn't appear to be cost effective or whatever, then we can just reject them.
How is it done currently?
It's currently done with city employees. And with some of their other duties and obligations, it's occasionally kind of a hit or miss. There's no overwhelming problem. I don't mean to imply that. It's not that our employees aren't doing what they have to do. But kind of going back to the deal of the mowing and all that type of stuff, there are other issues and items that they need to take care of that I think might have a higher quality.
Are you looking at Calvin Park, you talked about the bathroom there?
Correct.
So that's what we're talking about, not cleaning grounds or anything like that.
No, 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 no. This is strictly building, cleaning standard type of stuff.
So you would bid the entire art center, not just the bathroom, the whole art center?
Correct.
And it's all of the public works as well?
Not the shop?
Oh, I understand, but where the building, administration first.
It might cure the bid, but you do need the graphics and the shop too. Or somebody.
Well, you know, you've had an example. As far as I know, the shop would generally take care of that.
And I didn't use those facilities before, so.
Case in point. But there's a, this is what I want to go back to, okay? There's a big difference. Well, obviously, like you know at home, if it's just you and then your kids and their families come to visit about, "Wow, what a change," you'll go with all that type of stuff. But we have the same type of thing based on the volume that you wind up having. So for example, at least as far as I know, we're able to do okay with our folks at Creequod because Creequod doesn't have as high of a volume demand as they seem to have at Catalun Park, for example. The art center, you know, is generating its own revenue very well, I can point that out, you know? But also, that's one that constantly needs to be kept up with because of how often it's being rented out. It's being rented out a lot more. Leisure Services, for example, is able to keep up. We may take a look at it sometime later down the road, but they're able to keep up with the rural center, but that is a constant every day. I mean, you see what I mean? So I think that, you know, this may be having changes for, it may not. It may turn out we go in and take a look at it, and we'll know that's not cost effective, so we won't do it. But, you know, I'd like your concurrence at least to go out and see what the market will provide.
Counsel?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 3D4, An Update on the Wetlanding Signs, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packet, Mr. Smith apologizes for not being here, but he had another obligation. Although what I'm going to be talking about is not directly related to what Mr. Smith does. Do you remember, Mr. Smith? And you all are involved in the big picture. Okay, provided to you is the latest response from KMC, I think, you know, whatever the firm is that you hired. What I'm interested in is to find out from council what they would like to do. And I believe in your board pack there, you have a series of different signs. Everybody see where I am? Okay, well, what I'm interested in is taking a look and see what you would like to do for the identification signs that are when you reached the location, okay? So for example, if you take a look on the street two, I think it is, you have the Go Fish Education Center. Everybody see where I am there? Okay. What I'm interested in is for you to think about, and you do not, we're not expecting a decision on that tonight. I'm going to emphasize that, okay? But what I'd like you to think about is along those lines, what type of signage is it that you are interested in that we would start putting up at our city locations? Okay, so for example, you've already made the determination that the pinpoint is going to be on the sign rather than the white circle with the star. Remember what I'm talking about there? Okay. You also have the deal, of course, there's a series of varieties there on the signs that have some type of trim around it. Everybody see what I'm talking about there? Like a silver with trim, okay? What I'm interested in is what kind of signage would you like to be thinking about that we would use to standardize for all our city locations? So for example, my thinking is, is that we would have a standard type of sign, like kind of see with Go Fish, although it might be a little wider. It would have the name of the facility on it and the municipal address. And it would be a single post rather than two.
Might even be the size of the proportion and directions of it.
Correct, and it'd be a little lower, you know? So you would see, now, the reason for that is, is that, one, I think it's important that we have identification signs on all our parks, property, all that kind of stuff. So if, say, well, I'm going to meet at Woodlawn Park, people know where Woodlawn Park is, they've seen it, okay? The reason for the municipal address is that's one of the requirements we have on all our city signs for public safety purposes, as well as for people to say, "Well, I'd like to again meet at Woodlawn Park." If you're from out of town, wherever you can pull it up, you know, the address can identify. And we're recommending the one post because the one post would be easier to maintain than the two posts. You may notice the posts we have now, over time, as due to mowing and all that type of stuff, they get kind of cut up and damaged. Well, if there's only one, that's half as much that has to be taken care of.
Could we not blend the different types of signs depending on what kind of physical property you have there? I mean, I could envision going back to KMA and asking them to give us our entry signs in a format that you could use at the city hall rather than using the pole sign for city hall, that you would have a monument sign out front that was more representative of your entry signs.
That would be fun. But that's what I'm asking you to think about. Because we need to start getting signage up around the city.
And I would like to go back to them and ask them, but for your park, you might very well be perfectly satisfied with a sign that's like Go Fish. And that would be an indicator. But I think that if you've got a fixed facility, you probably like the art center or like city hall or police, you might want a different sign for that.
And you may have a few signs, such as Welcome Park. It's almost like this sign, but it's probably the cross park. And you may be able to come up with a slight variation of this sign to not have destroyed the brickwork.
I would do it.
Oh, oh, yeah. Yeah, I was not thinking that we do anything, just like the brickwork.
Right.
I'm just talking about, number one, where we have city property or parks where there is no identification sign. Or it's a variation of one of the street banner type of signs. And then from there, we would start moving and go like, for example, I think there's still two signs out there at Rojer Park. I'm not talking about the big, like trying to display about two. Well, we change it just to, just to one and start getting that consistency. Same thing, for example, like Catalun Park, you know, that type of stuff.
Yeah, a number of cities that I've seen do this, they have a variation of whether it's a judicial center or whether it's their city hall or where it's a park. But it's all, it all looks the same, it just comes in a different package. Some of it could be brickwork and some of it could be... And I think, you know, if we asked, you know, Ash Walker to go back and ask KMA to give us that type of packaging, I think they can do that in this budget offering that's here.
Mr. Gilmore, I believe he's asking us to take it under consideration. Correct? He's asking us to take it under consideration. Anything further, council? Item 3D5 is of the 2017 LMIG Allocation Funds, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you. Mayor and council, in your packet is a memo from Mr. McBurn. He is also here, if he has any particular questions. This actually should be a pretty simple question to you all. Though one never goes, I realize that. But as you can see, you know, from the memo, we have three, I'm sorry, we have four streets that have already been designated and have been bid out and either working on or getting ready to go for, using LMIG money 2017, which you all approved. And they are Park Avenue, Forest Avenue, King Circle, and St. Patrick's Drive. What we'd like to recommend to you, although the net result does not change the amount of money going in, one, I want to emphasize that. But when we had some of the discussions about St. Patrick's Drive and talked about using LMIG money for St. Patrick's Drive, we have run into some issues on St. Patrick's Drive, I guess, to put it mildly, Chad. It's going to, you know, cost us some additional money, which we have in the sloss, okay? Primarily base work, we had redone up there. So what we'd like to recommend to you all, as long as you don't have any objections, is that we use the LMIG money to do Park Avenue, Forest, and King Circle from LMIG. And then what we have left over from LMIG will go on St. Patrick's Drive. Our 30% match goes on St. Patrick's Drive plus whatever else we make. And that just makes it a little cleaner on the end of the street. I want to emphasize, the total amount of money that's going to be spent is the same whichever way you wind up doing it. Right. But I don't like to do these things without you all being aware of what we're talking about doing. The other thing which we like to do too with the LMIG is if people ask or it comes up, or after a year we show that the money is used in different sections around the city rather than used all for one particular project. And that's why we're bringing this to you.
Concurrents, council, what to proceed is described?
Yes.
Would you like to vote on Mr. Gilmore's?
No, if you concur, that's fine.
Sounds like a good occurrence. Mr. Gilmore, is anything further that we need to talk about under item 3 for items for review and discussion?
Yes, sir.
Item 4, council member items, Mr. Brian Grace? Mr. Jones? Mr. Walker? Mr. Hunt? Mr. Jackson? Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Walker? Thank you. Item 5, Department head items, we'll start with the Department of Community Development. Mr. Wood?
Mayor and council, I just wanted to give you an update on the special acceptance application for the resident business on Swift Street that you looked at a couple of weeks ago. Just wanted to make sure you're aware that this Hannah did come in and make modifications to her application so that she qualifies as and has been approved as a home office and has withdrawn her application for the resident business.
Thank you. That, just to be, just to clarify, when she made the change and accepted the terms of the home office, that is a staff-level approval?
That's correct, yes.
And it has been approved?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, sir. From the Department of Legal Services, Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I want to let you know that our Kids' Fishing Area Saturday went off outstanding. Mr. Brian Grace, thank you for the work. Great recreational activity we've had. Did not have rain or wind or freezing or whatever, but it was a wonderful time. A lot of great pictures. Ellen is putting together some stuff for us about social media. A lot of good compliments from everybody who's a part of it. So it was a lot of fun. And I thought it's Alan Ellis put in a lot of work into that. It's kind of his baby and it required about two months of babysitting some fish and dealing with some complaints for one of the ponds being closed. But it went very well. The other thing is we have some new staff members. One of them started last week, so they're getting acclimated. And we have a new athletic supervisor reporting for June tomorrow. So if you're down and around, we've got some new faces. Say hi to them. We have very high expectations, very pleased that we have found the opportunities that we have.
Now, just to be clear, Mr. Ellis was not babysitting fish and were to put them on the kids' hooks?
Right.
I can either confirm or deny.
That's fair enough. As long as everybody had a good time, that's all.
I think that's good, very lovely. Looking forward to doing that again next year. One of those I want to keep on books.
That sounds good, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
From the Police Department, Chief Lynn?
Nothing else, sir, thank you.
Thank you. From the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, Chief Parker?
Nothing else, sir, thank you.
Public Works, Mr. Shell?
Nothing.
Chad, anything?
No, sir.
Good. Every time you show up, it costs us money. From the City Clerk's Office, Ms. Warren, do you have anything?
Actually, I believe that. There was an email sent out to the council with some dates suggested for the tour. Did you look at the email and advise you that one of those dates that you couldn't run in front of the tour for the last time?
And council, will you all please look at your calendars? And tomorrow evening, we'll have an answer for Ms. Warren. Thank you. Somebody reminded me of Warren, I got to be Ms. Warren. Thank you. From our media specialist?
Nothing tonight.
Anything?
No, sir.
That sounds correct. Anything?
No, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, does anybody else have anything to be good to order that they would like to add at this time? Thank you. Our regularly scheduled council meeting is tomorrow. The pre-council's at five o'clock upstairs in the conference room. Six o'clock will be the council meeting in this area. The Robbins Regional Chamber of Commerce is having an agenda issue breakfast Thursday morning. And I believe they have, the state legislators are going to give their comment dates, if I'm not mistaken, for that. date, if I'm not mistaken, for that. And on a personal note, my son's graduating college Saturday.
Oh.
He needs a job, by the way.
He'll have a fine moment.
He'll be like, "I appreciate that, thank you." And that's all I have, if nobody else has anything else. We thank you for your interest and participation in the standing.